Good evening Chairman Di Maria, Vice Chairman Albrecht and School Board members. Tonight I come to you with our 2015-16 proposed school year budget. Part of our presentation will be the division progress and accomplishments, state budget challenges, budget priorities, parameters and process, the fiscal year 2015-16 proposed budget, as well as our upcoming budget meetings. But before I get into the budget itself, I would like to highlight some of the accomplishments from our efforts to date. They're not all inclusive, and I could easily spend hours talking about the people in this school system that have worked so very, very hard. Tonight, we've had board members talk about the work that has taken place in our school system, but I can honestly tell you, and I'm, I know that I'm going to spend a few minutes extra talking about this, but I think that our staff needs to be recognized for the work they've done. I have never worked in a school system with people that have worked so hard, and I've said to some that I've never had to push people the way we've pushed our staff, but it's been for our kids. And so what I'd like to do is highlight the things that have taken place so that when we talk about our fiscal year 16 budget, that we can see how far we've come and what our next steps are. Year one started in my first year here in the 2012-13 school year. We began the year with audits identifying academic, technology, communication, compensation, human resource, all of the, we looked for where the deficiencies and the strengths were. We wanted to know what was affecting student achievement, finance, operations and transparency. But first and foremost, as we began looking, the one thing that everyone talked to me about was the performance of the schools to increase the graduation rate at Osborne High School and have it become fully accredited. The state of the schools in 2012-13 was that Osborne High School was accredited with warning both in academic performance and graduation rate. Hayden and Dean were focus schools. Metz, Mayfield and Baldwin were in school improvement. Round and Weems Elementary Schools were the only schools not under the supervision of the Department of Education. The Division was at a juncture where the Department of Education was moving forward to establish the identification of our textbooks, an instructional framework and a process for response to intervention with our students. All of the schools were under the supervision of the Department of Justice in regards to implementation of ESOL services. The relationship with the Department of Justice had become adversarial because the Division had not followed the agreed upon requirements. Discussions with the Department of Education, the Department of Justice, the Secretary of Education and the Governor's Office resulted in opportunities for the Division to plan on its own, what needed to take place, and then submit its plan for approval to the state and the Department of Justice. Beginning in January 2013, teachers, administrators and support staff began the process of identifying what needed to change in Manassas City Public Schools. First and foremost, the Division had to remove its silos between schools and the Division with other divisions. When schools work in silos, students do not have the access to equal opportunities to information, resources, and as a Division, there is a loss of information and support to the schools. The silos came down in a matter of six months, and it's only because of the people that work in this school system. For the schools, it meant establishing a K-12 instructional framework that our teachers played a part in designing and reviewing and approving, not the Department of Education. Curriculum mapping took place in all grade levels and subject areas, and that began in the summer of 2013. This Department of Education wanted to do it for us. Division-wide textbook adoption took place. We picked our own textbooks, and we needed those textbooks because they needed to match the standards of learning. A college board pre-AP springboard curriculum was decided upon in grades six through eight because the teachers knew that the kids needed to be stronger in their literacy to be more successful and have the opportunities at Osborne High School. Common unit assessments were designed at all grade levels, and you know, they worked once someone turned around and had to rework that work because they were learning while they worked their first summer. And we used interactive achievement that also opened us to opportunities to work with over 50 other divisions because they too use those same common assessments. We, they wanted targeted professional development the teachers asked, the teachers could request and participate in. We implemented a response to intervention program with planned students intervention, whereas in the past, when kids were not being successful, we sent them to child study and they automatically, or maybe not, went into special education. And response to intervention adds another layer of support where our students are considered for special education. We have a university, universal screening and progress, progress monitoring through Ames Web. Previously to that, teachers talked about hours and hours and hours of assessments, and now through Ames Web, it's done in less than 30 minutes per child. PE teachers talked about they didn't have a curriculum, and they got together on their own and identified the Spark curriculum that we still use today. There was a reorganization of the Special Ed Department so that we could better serve our parents and students. And our pre-K teachers established a neighborhood-based full-day preschool program under VPI that was so strong during the summer, I got a call from the Department of Education and said it was the strongest program development they'd seen across the state. And human resources, and you know, that was work that was happening in the schools. Then at the central office level, there was revision of all the school board policies, and that was a partnership with the school board in that process, and regulations that reflect the national school board policy format. There was a revised teacher mentor program at the request of the teachers in the program, and they got together and worked with their, the mentors worked with the mentees and looked at what changes need to be made. And today, our program is based on that, on the work they did. They coordinated and implemented new evaluation instruments for teachers, educational specialists, school nurses, school counselors and administrators. I'm still in the same year, year one. There were revisions to the employee recognition program that came out of the Superintendent's Advisory Council for Pear, Apple and Agnes Meyer. What you see today are the changes those staff members made. We also had the implementation of training on background checks, and that was one of the projects from the board. It was very sound. In fact, there's some school systems in Maryland that are now considering that same process. We have a revision of extra pay for extra duty job descriptions. We're still in that same year, where we're looking at how, when people are asked to do something, what is it you really want them to do, and are they being compensated for what they're doing? And we expanded, expanded our recruitment efforts in order to establish a more diverse staff. In communication, we developed a communications plan, a boot camp speakers bureau, a communication training for principals. We now have at-the-board meeting updates that go out following every single board meeting, a new website, a new brand identity. We launched a social media with Twitter and Facebook. We did the Be There campaign. We started Saturdays with the superintendent that fall, and we have a community engagement sessions for CIP and strategic plan, all in 2012-13. In finance, we supported a classification and compensation study, and through that, the board worked and we improved teacher salary scales. Remember the bathtub kind of thing we had? We replaced the financial and payroll system that was originally purchased in 1986 and a separate budget system purchased in the 90s with an integrated business system. The previous systems were outdated and they could not accommodate the changes of VRS, and I was surprised at the amount of Excel spreadsheets we were using when I got here. We also began a zero-based budget process. That was the only way that we could make all the changes that I will talk about in Phase Two that required extra people to be hired, is through that zero-based project, process that we still use today. In maintenance and facilities, they implemented a comprehensive five-year facilities and maintenance plan, developed a division-wide custodial handbook and training program. There was a joint CIP process with the city that was invaluable. Out of it came a long-range facilities master plan. We provided web-based bus routing information to our parents, and we redesigned the bus routes because we were two million dollars short in the fiscal year 14 budget, and today we're still, I still wish we could go back to what we had, and one day we will when the state decides to fund us properly. And we established a quarterly safety and maintenance inspections at all schools, which were beneficial to our employees and guaranteed the safety, guarantees of safety of our employees and students. At the time that, during that 12-13 school year, some of the things that I heard was that we really were a community of discord, a community of discord was growing between the city and the schools due to lack of communication and collaboration within the community to support the schools and raise achievement. Two major community engagement events took place during that year and started changes that we'll talk about tonight. The joint CIP, an event that we participated with the city jointly, resulted in a five-year CIP that we still follow today. The Manassas City Public Schools strategic plan development was also a community process, and it guides the work of the Division and is updated and presented annually to the school board. Both events established a foundation for the work that needed to be accomplished in the school, and as a result, we have a balanced scorecard and program evaluation that takes place in monitoring those processes. The last 19 months, Phase Two, has been a period of implementation, monitoring and continued focus on practices and procedures. The staff in the schools and at the central office level have been committed to turnaround processes that increase student achievement, improve the performance and work of the Division. And this is why our teachers say change, this change has been hard. To support student learning, we now have career pathway planning in grades seven through 12, and that is required by state statute, and they do that through an obviance program. We have a K through eight STEM plan with Project Lead the Way and Pisco with STEM coaches and STEM teachers. We have a counseling program that follows the standards of American School Counselors Association, and we're in the process now of developing a secondary guidance plan that embraces career and technical education, STEM and workforce development, and that will be in place by the end of the year. There are more dual enrollment opportunities for students, and the opportunities will continue to grow. The future holds more opportunities for students who graduate from Osborne High School with college credits. There's an establishment now of an instructional framework that's K through 12. It's utilized in all of our schools. We have schools, we have our students that are at the elementary school from pre-K through fourth, and then they quickly transition through two schools and finally end up at Osborne High School. Schools can't be siloed, and neither can teachers and classrooms. Teachers work with students, students do not reboot from teacher to teacher, and now with an instructional framework, it all works in unison. We have learning maps in all core subjects developed by teachers and academic coaches based on the Virginia standards, and this ensures that all kids have equal access to information, resources and reach experiences. We have the implementation of a new digital curriculum in world history at Osborne High School, where we're supported by tablets creating a one-to-one environment for ninth and 10th graders and soon our new rising ninth graders. Two years from now, Osborne High School will be one-to-one in grades nine through 12. Osborne High School students will be engaged in a learning process that not only prepares them for college, but the world of work. The Avid Program, which has, students speak so highly of, those that are involved in it love it. The Avid Program provides support to students who are planning to go to college, and it's for all kids. It establishes a foundation of skills necessary for success. Osborne High School is in year two of implementation. Metz is in year one with after-school clubs. A CTE committee has been established to design a K-12 CTE program so that all students have experiences in exploring different careers while working within a soft skills curriculum that will prepare them for success post-high school. Seventh and eighth grade students now work with counselors through the noviance programs, participating in individual academic and career planning. CTE offerings have been expanded to include pharmacy tech one and criminal justice. This is just in the last 19 months, and I'm continuing. To support student success, we've also had new start and release times with later high school start times. We have academic reviews that have been done at Osborne High School, Mayfield and Metz. There's professional development now just for, not just for teachers, but all staff. We've established a K-12 attendance and K-12 discipline committees, and we now have someone that supervises the attendance and discipline among all schools, so school discipline and attendance isn't siloed, and that it's all reported, and that we talk about our strengths and our struggles. We have a positive behavior intervention and support program that we're working with George Mason University to implement in all schools. We've implemented a visitor management system at all schools. We've expanded even more our recruiting efforts to hire the best and brightest and diverse teaching staff. The Superintendent's Advisory Committee identified weaknesses in our substitute selection, orientation and training process. Through their work, a process supported by a handbook, training and recruitment has been established. New employee orientation has been designed so that training is face-to-face in all areas as opposed to partially online. Finally, an established process to check and verify the certification of all current and new employees ensures that all teachers and staff have been fully vetted beyond the work of the Department of Education. In community and engagement, we now have a parent and community leadership academy with 30 participants. We have a Superintendent's Advisory Council, a committee made up of teachers and another with high school students. We still continue our Saturday with the superintendent, which is designed for parents and the community. We have school board liaisons who do a wonderful job and work hard in trying to make that connection between what happens at the Division level and what happens at the school level. In support services, when we think about that we now have a five-year facilities plan, that plan maintains 1,083,136 square feet, including all of our trailers. We have 449 classrooms, including our trailers, and we have 63 buses. And I say all that because all of that is maintained as a part of our five-year maintenance plan, general maintenance program and our CIP. The cost of our five-year maintenance plan, which didn't exist prior to 2012, the 2012-2013 school year, the cost this year for it is 817,000 and next year will be 846. That's on top of the 1.1 million dollars we spend just on regular maintenance. Our annual utilities are running us about 1.6 million dollars, and to curb those costs this year, in this year's budget, we're recommending a hire in our operations department, in Mr. Hilton's department, and that person will be totally responsible for lowering the costs of our utilities. And our first, our first act is to make sure that he, that we find enough that pays the salary and benefits, and then beyond that, work to greater, to greater savings. Very similar with what happened to us with Linda Trimble when she began working as our purchasing agent. And if you'll recall, she saves more than a half million dollars per year, much more than her salary. There's been many things that have taken place across the Division with how we plan. Jenny Dean has had a renovation replacement study that we're going to be using as we plan for our 2012, 2020 to 2030 plan, planning process. We now have security cameras all throughout our schools because we've applied for grants and we've achieved those. We've got, we've handled the boiler replacements and we've demolished buildings and we've got a, we've added on to Osborne High School. We've improved our parking lots, and Metz now has a new track, and they can now have competitions at their school, and we also have baseball and softball fields that Osborne High School and Metz will be sharing. We also have a new entry system into our schools with access reader cards. I know that sounds like, you know, I'm getting into the weeds, but the thing is, these are things that our Division, the people in our Division have been doing in the last 19 months. Everyone has been so very busy. In technology, which is way over my head, the things that I do understand that they've done is they've replaced, they've replaced 1,500 antiquated computers. They've added 351 computers to bring the student to computer ratio to two to one or better at all Manassas City Public Schools. They've implemented a one-to-one tablet initiative. They've updated our Division infrastructure with wireless connections, with broadband access. The things that have been accomplished with just the limited people that we have in our technology department is unbelievable, and if anyone wants to see that work, it is all monitored through our balanced scorecard, and our program evaluation is guided by that as well as our strategic plan, which can all be found on our website. So with all that's been done, what are those, what are the accomplishments been that our teachers and students have felt? Osborne High School, we've had steady progress on our SOLs, but I would like to add that the work on our student achievement began 19 months ago, and we've had one test last spring of SOLs since that work began. Along with that, Osborne High School took a huge leap, and they became fully accredited. They have graduation rate increase. Their auto-tech program is now National Auto Technicians Education Foundation accredited, which is big stuff for our kids that graduate from there. 1.65 million in scholarships. Gates Millennium Scholar, fine arts Grammy nominee for three years in a row. Their Eagle Branch has won the Apple Federal Credit Union Branch of the Year Award. Our Model UN was the top school at the TANAM Conference, and we have a high school teacher, Heather Warrentine, that won the Franklin Kaiser Distinguished High School Chemistry Teacher of the Year. Osborne High School's very, very busy. At Weems, right now, they're a national finalist for the National Excellence in Urban Education. We found out that right now they're bronze, they're at the bronze level. Mid-March, they will find out if they are, will move to the platinum or silver level, silver or platinum, and they have been already invited to go to Dallas, Texas to receive their bronze, and hopefully instead it will be silver or platinum, but if it's not, I'm so proud of the work that they've done. They're also known for, as a higher expectation school through the Department of Education. Round is one of our distinguished, is noted as a distinguished Title I school and a high expectation school. And Hayden, remember earlier I said that they were a focus school, well, no, they're not anymore. They've increased their student improvement, and they are no longer identified as a focus school. Our governor's school, when I first got here, we didn't have enough kids in the program. We filled all but one seat this year, and next year we have, I believe, 16 students that have already made application. We've also, our governor's school team won Best in State and Best in Region with a Verizon Innovative App Challenge, and guess what? One of those students was ours, again from Osborne High School, Katherine Crim. The Integrated Math and Science Program now came out of Manassas Next. It was an initiative, I think, that was a joint project between the city and the Division, but it's now a program that work, and they're being recognized with the General Assembly. Our English Speakers of Other Language Program that we call ESOL, well, it's now exceeding the state requirements, and I'll show you what it looks like in a few minutes in our elementary schools, what the kind of results that they're receiving. And technology and STEM, Manassas Public Schools has been recognized in EdTech Magazine, in the Pisco Education Journal, both for how they engage, how Metz engages students in their learning processes, as well as the school system as a whole. And then the Metz Middle School Robotic Team won the VEX IQ Team Challenge Award. None of these things can happen without leadership. We have 22 teachers participating in the first-ever Aspiring Leaders Program. Their cohort is very important because as they work through this cohort, work through the cohort as first-time people, they will be helped to frame it to be even stronger and better next year. We have a JMU Leadership Cohort that started in January, last month at Osborne High School. We have 19 teachers that participate in the student, the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, two Osborne High School students that are school board liaisons, 11 students participate in the students, the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee. We have a leadership opportunities that have expanded for students at Osborne High School through Student Congress, Key Club, a new interact club started by students, leadership classes through career and technical education program as well. And we have 30 parent and community members who are participating in the first Manassas City Public Schools Parent and Community Leadership Academy, and their participation will guide as we, as we move forward into Cohort Two. So what does this all look like? As you will notice, one of the schools that I want to highlight is Osborne High School. While when they were accredited with warning, it was in the area of mathematics, and as you can see, they grew from 55% to 80%, and their English has increased from 78% to 83%. If you look at their graduation rate, it's no longer a problem. The only problem I think they have is that they continue to strive to take it to the 90th, over the 90th percentile. But if you'll notice back in 2010 with that cohort, they started at 76%, and now they're at 86%. And while their score from the previous year is down one, it's just four tenths of a point, folks. The areas in green are where they, they can continue to raise the bar for their students. When I looked at our data for our ESOL students, remember that was the students that are learning to speak English, I found something so very profound. When I looked at our elementary, how, what our elementary school classrooms looked like, I discovered that at Baldwin, for instance, 85 of 129 of the students require ESOL support, and at Weems, 107 out of 164. That's one point of reference, but the greatest point of reference, when I first got here and after I gave my 100 Days Report, I said that all of our ESOL students would learn to speak Spanish, speak English within three years. So look at the red. When we started out in the blue, we were 66, 59. You're looking at high numbers of students that are sitting in kindergarten classrooms, and our kindergarten classrooms today are the first-grade classrooms of yesterday. So all of our children that do not participate in a pre-K program come to us, and they are working at warp speed to catch up. And then we have our students who are learning English, so they're in triple warp. So when you look at the work that our elementary teachers are doing, when 66 and 59, 54, 50 and 65% of their students come to them learning, and they want to learn, the teachers are, they're learning English, and they're learning our Virginia standards. So our demographics, the demographics, we're a very diverse school system. We have a rich culture of experiences in our classroom. Actually, we have 55 language, languages, home languages that kids come to each day to our schools in the Division. Our primary language, home language, is Spanish. Our primary language, home language, is Spanish. Now I'd like to share with you the major challenges we're facing in balancing a budget that meets the needs of our students, parents and community. The first slide has, and this is a slide we talked about last year. Our funding today is not the same as our funding of yesterday. Now remember I said that our kindergarten and our first grade academic programs are, they're yesterday's second and first. So we've had to purchase new resources, work with our kids, we've had to do a number of things, and actually the allotment that we received from the state is much less. Today, if we were receiving at least the same amount that we received back in two thousand nine, we would be seven million more dollars within our budget. That means that just one thing I can think of that bothers me the most, and most times, especially during the winter, is our bus schedule would be changed and it would be back to the way it was, because we could afford to buy new buses. With the state funding reductions to education since two thousand nine, they've eliminated lottery support for schools' construction and operating costs. And that's been, that cost, um, Manassas about two million dollars. Um, they've implemented support cost caps, um, and that's resulted in one point seven million dollars loss of revenue. We've lost cost of competing. And when we, when they don't, when the, when we, when they do not continue to, um, to, allocate cost of competing, we can't tell our teachers, um, I'm sorry, we're not getting cost of competing anymore from the state. No, we have to, that has to come out of our budget. And that loss was point eight million dollars. There's also been numerous other adjustments to the funding formula, some of which we're going to be facing as we continue to improve. The more we improve, the less money we receive from the state. We've also had state mandated costs in the VRS pension. And the estimated cost to that with those increases, and I'll show you what that'd look like on the next slide, it's three point five million dollars to the division. So if you look at your VRS group rates, the General Assembly sets the rates for teacher pensions. When the recession hit, investment losses created s- a much larger unfunded pension obligation. To make, to complicate matters, pension rates were set at a historically low rates to reduce state and local funding to the pension plan. And we are now paying today because of those decisions. The governor has proposed a change in the pension plan for fiscal year sixteen to fourteen point five, point fifteen percent, which is included in this budget. The Senate and Finance Committee, the Senate Finance Committee and House Appropriation Committee is also looking at that. So now what I'd like to do is move into us and talk about our budget priorities and the process that we followed. As with every year, since the first, since, um, the twenty, January of two thousand thirteen, we follow now a zero-based budget. It's the best way that we can do to identify money. And I can tell you this year with our budget, if we had not done zero-based, I don't know how we would have gotten to where we are, because we're really almost, I would have to say we're at the bone marrow now. It's gonna, it is difficult, especially when the, when the General Assembly is allowed to, um, mandate, um, vote on, approve mandates that they don't fund. I'd also like to add, um, and Mr. Bushnell's not here tonight, but he, um, made a recommendation that we start the budget process earlier. We, we started the CIP process earlier and afforded, um, people in the community that opportunity to come forward through public hearing to speak about the budget. And I am presenting two weeks earlier, which will allow, um, more people to come forward and talk about the things that they would like to see in the budget. With our budget priorities, I think I've talked a lot about, already about what we're doing, um, but this highlights again what we have to think about with our budget, and that's student achievement, our enrollment increases, the recruitment, training and retention of highly qualified staff, our fiscal responsibility and infrastructure and capacity. And that covers technology and facilities and transportation, our capital projects, the big money stuff outside of our, um, compensation. Our challenges have, are, will and continue to, will be, continue, will be and will continue to be enrollment growth. Um, increased participation in free and reduced lunch and ESOL services costs money. Students that, that come from, um, families that are just working to make ends meet need the extra support during the school day because they may not be getting the same support at home. And it's not the problem of the parents, it's, it's, they're trying to make their homes run. State funding reductions include unfunded initiatives, retirement and health insurance cost increases, facility and capacity needs and technology, the infrastructure and devices. So as I get ready to present what our budget is, there's something that I feel like I need to go, go over with everyone. Since the first year that I got here, there's been such a great discussion about our, our cost per pupil. And what I would like to do is talk about what that cost per pupil looks like. So if you will look at, if you will look at the, at your graph, if you, and what I've done is I've compared Alexander City, Arlington County, Fairfax County, Folch- Folstridge City, Loudoun, Manassas Park and Prince William. If you notice in free and reduced, with our free and reduced rate, we are the highest in the area. If you look at our special education, we serve more special ed students than other sit- divisions in the area. If you look at the number of students that we have learning to speak English, we have more than other divisions in the area. If you look at our enrollment, we are growing. Um, from the beginning of the year, which would, our last budget was planned on seven, on seven thousand three hundred and ninety-six, and we're now at seven thousand four hundred and twenty-three. Another cost that we, when you're looking at cost per student, you look at the services you provide. We provide our students with special ed teachers and ESOL teachers according to the students' needs. We write our IEPs based on what the students need. We write our ESOL plans based on what students need. And then if it requires staff, we hire those staff. We also have reduced class size, but based on the, the needs of our students. When you have a high free and reduced rate, a high ESOL rate, a high special ed- education rate, you need lower class sizes, because every child deserves equal access to a good education. We bring in extra teachers to support those learners, but the classroom teacher has to be able to work with her classroom and meet the needs of gifted and other students. And finally, I'd like to add about our, our kindergarten program. I've also had questions about Loudoun County. Look at Loudoun County's cost per pupil. Loudoun County has fifty-six schools, fifty-one of which have half-day kindergarten. And if those fifty-one schools hired full-day kindergarten teachers, their cost per pupil would be much higher than ours. So when we talk about what our cost per pupil is, we have to look at what our services are that we provide. And our cost per pupil has to do with our curriculum, our instruction and our students. So one of the, one of the things that I wanted to show is why those costs go up. As you will see, we have an eight, we've had an eight point four increase, percent increase from two thousand ten to two thousand fifteen in our, in our membership. We've also had a thirty-six point seven percent increase in our free and reduced lunches. We've had a twenty-six point eight percent increase in the number of students that participate in our, our ESOL program. And our special education has remained constant. One of the things that we have to remember is that children from low-income families hear thirty million fewer words before age three. And they have a vocabulary of about six hundred and fifty words less, um, rather than twenty-five hundred words in kindergarten. Vocabulary is linked to comprehension. And Title I and ELL students have stark achievement gaps in vocabulary. Reading has a massive impact on brain function and affects understanding in nearly all subjects. A parent's involvement in a child's education is a major deterrent, determinant of success in school. So when we look at these, we look at these statistics, they're not excuses. They are our challenges. And we welcome every child that comes in our door. But in order to teach children, we have to have the, we have to have the appropriate staffing and resources to meet their needs. So as we look at our proposed budget, the key cost, the, our key cost drivers of this budget was school-based staffing to support an increasing student membership, competitive compensation, student transportation, maintenance and operations, technology improvements and debt service for New Baldwin Elementary and Intermediate School. These were the areas that we had to look at when we start, when we started at fifteen million and ended where we were now as, on budget. And that's what you'll see on our next page. As you'll recall, the zero-based budget and the purchase of Amunis Financial System, we now go through five levels in the budget process. When we first started out, the schools and their departments worked with their people to determine what their needs were. It was a true needs-based budget of things, what would they, what did they feel like it would be great to have and would make everything just absolutely wonderful? And that came in at over a hundred and four million dollars. Well then, the schools and the departments, the school, the principals come in and they make their presentations to the central office. Um, it's actually the, on the superintendent's cabinet. And they look at and talk about what is, what is on the list that we see, that, that we do see as crucial? And what things can we put off for another rainy day? Or when that, when the state decides to, um, improve its funding? So that brought us down to, um, about ninety-seven point eight million. So then it gets to the hard part. Then they present the budgets to me. And I think that's the hardest part to me, because that's when I start looking at it and saying, okay, this is something that needs to come off immediately. And then there's another list of things that I say, let me think about it some more. And that brought it down just about a million dollars. So it's been hard. It's really, really been hard thinking about, how do we say no? Because like I said, we're down to the bone marrow now. So the superintendent's final, as we approach that, the proposed operating budget for the next year totals ninety-two million, five hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. It's one million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars more than last year's budget, budget. It represents a one point five percent increase. Approximately seventy-eight percent of the proposed operating fund expenditures, expenditures directly support school-based staffing and related costs. In Amunis, we have better identified costs by location, even when budget and staffing are centrally administered, such as school nurses, custodians, um, and I guess, and all the special ed, I knew there was one more. This change accounts for the majority of the differences in the percentages shown in the last year's budget, but better identifies costs on our instructional programs in the schools. Budget amounts not specifically identified to a school location, as well as division-wide services, are shown here by budget authority. So when you look at this, you can see that seventy-seven point five percent of our budget is resting in our schools, where it should be. When you look at student achievement and accountability, that looks like a large sum of money and you're looking at nine percent of the budget there, but what's inside of it? Well, and achievement and accountability, which is our testing, we have five hundred and, about five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars there. And in curriculum and instruction, there's two point six in, in there. And in ESOL, two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And in gifted and talented, two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And in special education, almost five million dollars. So that is what's resting in, inside student achievement. When we look at administrative and support services, and you see an eight percent cost there. We have health services at two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, administrative services at one point three million, maintenance and operation at one point six, facilities five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and then people transportation, almost three point seven million dollars. If you look at our operating expenditures of the pie chart, you will see how everything, you will see one large section of the circle, and it represents our compensation, our salaries and benefits, which is eighty-four percent of our budget. It doesn't leave much more for us to work with. And this is two percent more than last year, and it's due to your benefits, VRS and health So when I, part of the compensation adjustments that we have, um, for this year, I'm unable to provide a cost of living increase. And I've included funds to provide an experienced step for teachers and support staff, as well as a two percent mid, midpoint increase for administrative staff members. Raises for teachers have been proposed by the General Assembly and five hundred thousand in additional state revenue was estimated to offset the cost of this increase. But it will, what the state sends our way for the pay raise will not match at all what we have to, what we will be paying. And I've also included three hundred thousand to accommodate a five percent increase in health insurance premiums. So as you look at all of our operating funds, this chart summarizes our proposed budget for operations next year for all operating funds, including the food service and grant funds. While the school operating fund provides for the day-to-day operations of the school division, the federal grant fund provides for supplemental funding to support specific student populations, such as special ed, ESOL and low-income students. The food service fund accounts for the operations of the school cafeteria and is supported primarily by federal USDA funding and sales to stu- staff and student members. The total proposed budget for these funds, when combined with the operating fund, is one hundred million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. Our capital improvement plan, we have an established plan, this, we are now moving into our fiscal year sixteen and what, what needs to be done. We are also going to be starting our construction of New Baldwin. And we also, along with that, will continue to work on new facility improvements, technology upgrades, bus purchases, and you'll see those, um, in the, on the table. Um, this, this next slide adds the debt service and capital projects funds to the total operating funds as shown on the previous slide. The city allocation is split between operating fund, debt service fund and capital projects fund. After paying for debt service and capital projects, the remaining balance is available for operations. The combined budget for all funds for next year is one hundred and ten million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, which includes approximately two point seven million in capital projects paid from operating funds and seven point four million in debt service costs. The net debt service cost increase next year is about two point one million due to new debt service payments for, for the bonds issued to build New Baldwin, partially offset by savings from bond refinancings and a payoff of older borrowings. If you look at our fund balance, this slide shows that the projected fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty fifteen, sixteen, based on current projections and the proposed use of fund balance to support the proposed budget. Based on the proposed budget and current revenue estimates, we have included just over two point three five million use of fund balance for the operating fund next year and almost four hundred thousand in the food service fund, as the fund is not as at an acceptable level based on federal program regulations. The five-year forecast approved by the school board, May twenty-seventh, twenty fourteen, projected the use of two, two million, five hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars from fund balance to support the operating capital and debt needs for school year sixteen. This budget proposes a use of two million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars, which is two hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars less than the school board's twenty fifteen five-year forecast. These projections also show a more favorable ending fund balance than previously projected. In the food service fund, we will continue replacing equipment and improving our kitchens and dining areas next year. We are using fund balance to support these capital improvements. The food service fund is self-supporting and I'm pleased to announce that we will not have to raise mil- not have to raise meal prices for the second year in a row, and we will still be able to afford these improvements. Finally, when we look at our unmet needs, last year, when you saw our unmet needs, it was one table. This year, you have two tables. And when we look at these needs, which I'm going to have to move to the screen because it's too small to see, you will notice that many of the things that we were not able to put in the budget have to do with teachers and counselors, we have network administrators, we have benefit specialists, we have intervention specialists in most of the areas, but say two or three, things that we were not able to put into the budget are people that would be serving our students. On your next slide, and this slide, if you'll notice, on the first slide is one-point-five million dollars. Our next slide talks about non-personnel requests. When we look at school, non-school personnel, it has to do with a adjustment from our per-pupil allocation. We have textbooks, reduced consulting, software and hardware, things that we, that we either discontinued or that we were not able to move forward with. We've also, if you will notice, for program support, we've reduced the avid program tutors, training, and supplies with a delay of implementation at Mayfield. They would have started next year with the after-school tutoring program. We have also, every year, what we look at is trying to expand our use of VPI, our preschool program, and the amount that we would, that we have access to remains as an unmet need. And we would also like to restore our three-tier bus schedule. We have students now that come home, and some of them walking in the door at four-thirty in the afternoon. It's not optimal, but it's how we keep our schools open, and we keep our schools' staff staffed so they can meet the needs of our kids. So what we're looking at in unmet needs, and if, you know, if I were presenting a needs-based budget, my budget would show a need of over four-point-eight million dollars. Our public budget meetings that we have upcoming, we have one February the 12th, which is on Thursday evening from six to nine at the Central Office Boardroom, on March the 3rd from six to nine, again at the Central Office Boardroom, March the 12th from six to nine at the Central Office Boardroom, and finally, our budget work section on March the 14th from eight to 12 at the Central Office Boardroom, and that is a Saturday. We invite public input on the proposed budget on March the 10th at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. The school board will approve its budget on March the 24th at 7:00 PM at City Hall, and we will, the school board will present its approved budget to the Manassas City Council on April the 8th at 5:30 PM at location to be determined. And that concludes my budget presentation.
Thank you, Dr. McGorick, and Mrs. McGuire, and the rest of the staff. We know how much work you've put into this and how hard it is to try and balance limited funds with extraordinary needs. You have our work cut out for us. We will start on Thursday, and I don't think tonight is the right night for any questions, so if you'll come back up and join us.
Thank you.